Now, let's think about this just for a second. I want you to know how deeply, as a citizen, I appreciate your involvement tonight. Our country is in trouble. We have a lot of problems right now. And when I see this, it kind of warms my heart and makes me think there's still a chance that people do care. So give yourself a big round of applause. That would be appreciated. And now, one other thing before we start, maybe these two. To the candidates here that are here for the very first time, some of you have been running for school board in the past. I want you all to know that this is your opportunity as citizens to filter these candidates before they become council members, before they become congresspeople, congressmen or women. This is when they're beginning their careers. So this is your opportunity to get to know these candidates. And I appreciate each one of you running today. It means a lot to us as citizens as well. Thank you very, very much. And the last thing, then, we'll start with the questions. There is a timekeeper right here that has... Can you hold those up once at a time, please? A lot of people think it's okay to go over the minute. They're going to squeeze that last little bit out. I'm just letting you know, as someone that's been in the audience for many, many, many years, we tune out. As soon as you violate a rule like that, we don't even remember what you said leading up to it because we're so disappointed that you broke the rule. So please, when they say stop, just stop. Fair enough? Okay, here are the rules for tonight. Each candidate will have one minute for their opening statement to introduce themselves. We'll start from the left and go to the right. Each candidate will be given an equal number of questions, but not necessarily the same question. The candidates will have one minute to answer the question. If they mention one of these other candidates by name, the other candidate has a 30-second chance to respond. Candidates, please monitor the two timekeepers who'll indicate your time. Left, 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. Please keep your applause to the end so we can get in as many questions as possible. And if you have to leave the room for any reason, please exit up at the top of the steps out the back as not to block the view of the candidates and the timekeepers or interrupt the recording of the event. Thank you very much. You ready to begin?
Ready!
Let's do it! Okay. One minute opening will be to Laura Hughes.
Hi, my name is Laura Hughes. I'm running at large. I grew up in Chesapeake and I've lived in Virginia Beach since I was 19, so all of my adult life. I have two daughters that have both graduated from Virginia Beach schools. I'm a newly licensed attorney. I'm working on my guardian light of certification because I want to represent children. I volunteer as a CASA, which is an organization that represents abused and neglected children, and also work as a special education advocate. I spent last year's substitute teaching. And what I noticed was while Virginia Beach does a lot of things well, we have some things we can do better. We need to make sure that we have safe schools. We need to make sure that we're maintaining high academic standards. We need to make sure that we have fair and consistent disciplinary standards. And all of these things will help raise teacher morale, which we greatly need so that we can keep the wonderful teachers that we have. Again, my name is Laura Hughes and I'm running at large.
Good evening. Thanks, everyone, for coming out today. My name is Stephen Johnston. I know almost everybody here. We've got a great slate of candidates this year on the school board, so why should you vote for me? The number one reason is I'm not a teacher. I've never been employed by the Virginia Beach school system or any school system. My wife and family members have never been employed by the school system. We are completely detached from the education establishment. Don't get me wrong, we need teachers on the school board. We just open all teachers on the school board. What I'm going to do on my platform, it's on the back of my card for those of you who've got those, is I'm going to concentrate on classroom safety. Last year, there was a survey. The teachers didn't feel safe in the classrooms. Teachers aren't safe, you know, or students aren't safe. One of the other initiatives I'm going to be pushing is for public school choice. In Virginia Beach, every school is allowed to have its own policy, so you should be able to choose the school your child goes to that best fits their learning style. Again, my name is Stephen Johnston, and I'm running at large. Thank you.
Hold your applause to the end, please.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Malatia. I have served on the school board in the past in 2012 and 2014. Probably one of three of the best years of my adult life. And I'm anxious to go back and finish the work that I was involved in. You have a wonderful school board, you have a wonderful administration, and you have a very, very good superintendent. And we are on the right path. We're going the right way. Sure, there's things that we can change, but there are things that we need to pay attention to and people brought up safety. There was a blue ribbon paddle committee that came out with just a slew of recommendations, which are already being implemented. Teacher retention is probably the most important thing on my platform. So I thank you for attending tonight, and we'll talk to you later. Bobby Malatia.
All right, good evening. I'm Seko Varney, and I'm running for one of the enlarged seats for the Virginia Beach school board. Well, I am a business owner. I am a father of VBE students, and I work in workforce development. So normally, when I tell people that I'm running for the school board, they ask me three questions. Are you a teacher? Why are you running? And why should I pay attention? Well, I was a teacher for three years, a school counselor for 11 years, but now I'm working workforce development. I'm running because I worked in the schools, and now I want to work on the schools. And why should you pay attention? Because it's your resources that fund the school system. Your hard-earned work, your sweat, your brunt, your struggle funds our system. And you should place the best stewards of your vote on election day. I'm Seko Varney. My name sounds like a watch, and I'm right on time. Waiting for you, Seko Varney, November 6th. Take care.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Williams, and I run at the Bayside District, and I do not have a family. But seriously, I appreciate y'all electing me in 2002, and then again in 2006, 2010, and 2014. And it looks like I will be my right-hand voters, my right-hand hand. But anyway, the thing, when you elect me, I consider it as you are hiring me to do your job. So I work for you, and I think that is a big thing that you need to look at. I don't work for my colleagues. I don't work for the superintendent. I work for you, the voters. I am an advocate for special education, career and technical education, and true student accountability that goes beyond testing, but gets students prepared for the real world. And I think that we need to improve on that. So again, thank you for your past, and call me anytime, write me an email, because I will answer.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kendra Edwards, and I am running for school board in the Beach District. I grew up in Pennsylvania and have lived in Virginia Beach for 43 years. My husband is a retired master chief in the United States Navy, and we have been married 43 years. I have been a military spouse for 30 of those. We have four grandchildren currently in Virginia Beach schools, and I work as a security technician at school plan. I would like to see firsthand what our schools are doing right for our students, but I also see things that can be improved. My name is Kendra Edwards, and I'm running for Beach District. I would love to have your vote. Thank you.
Good evening, all. Carolyn Rye. And it has been an absolute honor to represent you all as the Lynn Haven District representative on school board these past four years. My husband, Ken, and I have been here 20 years, the proud parents of two Virginia Beach graduates. I'm a proud daughter of two high school teachers, and one being a football coach as well. We have... I take very seriously the non-hardest nature of this job. I know all of us here have political leanings of one persuasion or another, but please know that I approach this job with kid-first mentality. And when I joined on board, we had 67 out of 82 schools accredited. We're now fully accredited. I'm looking for another four years to continue the good efforts. We're on a roll. We want to implement full-day, continue full-day implementation of full-day kindergarten, special education, teacher compensation, school security. My website mentions my 10 priorities. Thank you so much. And I will be one of the ones looking out for another forum.
Good evening. I'm Mary Watson Wales, and I am your candidate for Lynn Haven District. I'm a retired English teacher, and when I get elected, I will be the only person on the school board with 30 years of high school experience. I started the very first National English Honor Society at First Colonial High School, and I've been endorsed by Vicky Manning and Senator Bill Distefano. I want to hold our students to a high accountability, both academically and behaviorally. And I'm going to bring back valedictorian and salutatorian. We need to have clear grading practices that allow our teachers to give zeros when necessary. We need to have safe schools and include hiring former military and police officers and provide man training for all of our faculty. I am Mary Watson Wales. I'm your candidate for Lynn Haven District. I've got signs up in the lobby. Please feel free to take one home with you and vote Mary Watson Wales on November 6th. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Paul Day. I'm running for the position on the Virginia Beach school board of the Princess Anne District. I'm Ohio native, United States native veteran, and I'm a retired Virginia Beach police officer. I have served as a resource officer, security officer, substitute teacher for 10 years after arriving retirement from the police department in many of our elementary, middle, and high schools throughout our great city. I also worked at the Norfolk-Jubilee detention center. I have two children who graduated from Virginia Beach City Public Schools. One was from Ocean Lakes Magnet Program, the math science program, and my daughter graduated from Princess Anne High School. I also have a grandson that's attending elementary at this time. And in addition to that, I have five more grandchildren out west. My two platforms is going to be safe schools and healthy students. Safe schools equals healthy students. My other platform is student discipline. Restore the respect in the classroom and on our school buses. Support our teachers, support staff, and our bus drivers. Please vote for me on November 6th. Paul Day for school board.
Okay, let's have a good, good round of applause. And then we'll get our questions by the way. Let's start with Paul. Paul, let me ask you this. These questions have come from the audience and a mix of people from the organizations themselves. Should students be held accountable for homework assignments?
Absolutely. Right now, it's called site-based. Every principal gets to decide what he's going to do. Some schools have no homework clause, but other schools do have that. And they should be held accountable. We understand there's a lot of students from different backgrounds, but we have to make provisions for those students in order to do their homework, whether it's come early to school or stay late after school because we don't understand their lifestyle. So I really believe that students should be held accountable for doing their homework.
Mary?
Yes, students need to be held accountable for homework. It's called responsibility. When I was in the English classroom and students showed up and didn't have their homework, it's very hard to begin your lesson plan because oftentimes that's your platform to begin that lesson. We do need to hold kids accountable. I mentioned that in the opening. And part of accountability is seeing to it as parents that our children are doing their homework and as teachers that we follow through to make sure that they do it. If they're not doing it, we need to call home. We need to find a resolution for why they're not doing it. We need to offer them some assistance for why they're not doing it. But yes, it's all about accountability, responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to switch gears just for a second. Carolyn, you have experience. And I would like to know what has been your experience with federal and state laws regarding Individuals with Disabilities Act and free and appropriate public education or faith?
Thankful for the question. Thank you. I have spent the past four years. It's been a major focus of mine, special, our neediest children. We have 8,000 children in this school district of 69,000 with individual education plans and another 3,000 with five or fours. I grew up with friends and family with special needs children, so this wasn't new for me, but I feel this added responsibility now. When we had a special ed PTA, I attended each and every meeting for the three years that they were in existence. I feel many questions from advocates, from special ed families. And this is one of the areas where I really hope to have another four years to continue to work with my other colleagues. We have a five-year education plan, and in year two of that, we initiated our own external review. So this is a top, top priority for this school board and for me personally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Williams, I'd like to ask you that same question.
Thank you. My third child received special education services from second grade through college. The doctors told me that he's not going to be successful in public schools, basically give up. I was an advocate for him. He is married, owns a house, has three children. So I know it can happen. Special education, we have got to make sure that we're more parent-friendly. It shouldn't be administration, principals, teachers against the parent. It should be we're all around the table to decide how best to educate this child who learns differently. I don't like to call it disability. I like to call it learns differently. We have to make sure we give them a legally correct education and an educationally sound education. We've got a lot of work to do in this area. Again, we have eight or 9,000 children who learn differently, and they have the same rights as all our other children. So I've been focused on that, and I will continue to focus on that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, please hold your applause so I can get to these questions as quickly as possible. I'll be able to ask more. This question, I'm going to ask every single one of you the same question. Do you agree with the Virginia Beach school board ending class rankings and naming of valedictorians?
I do not agree with ending valedictorian, salutatorian, and class ranking. The schools are still giving out trophies for sports. We have a teacher of the year. We have a superintendent of the year. And out in life, people compete for raises, for jobs, for promotions, and it starts when you're young. There is nothing wrong with wanting to be number one and working hard to attain a goal.
I disagree with the program. It's not necessarily the valedictorian, the salutatorian. It's getting rid of class ranking in general. My youngest son just got accepted to EVMF. Before that, he went to ODU. He was in the top 7% of his school. He was told not to apply to UVA because he was not the top, top 5%. So when students apply to colleges, and there are some that no longer look at class rankings, most quality schools are now looking at, are you in the top 10? Are you in the top 5? And when you say you're from Virginia Beach and you look at that class rank and it says NA, that application is going into the side of the table, and they're going to look for the students in the top 10%. It's going to greatly negative affect our students and our ability to send students to quality education in college. Thank you.
I'm somewhere in between. He's absolutely right. The college boards, for the most part, do not look at class rankings like they used to. And so I think that what's happened is they found, the school boards kind of has to find common ground. No, they don't call them valedictorians and salutatorians after 2022. I think that's when they end that practice. But they're still going to recognize the top person in every school. So that's not changing. So I mean, is... What's important? Is it important to get into a great college? Is it important, or is it important to be recognized and all the other people that are in there behind you don't get that recognition? I like what they've done. I like the Latin way. I think it's better. Thank you.
All right, well, I'm Seko Varney, and my background involves career and college counseling. So for five years, I was college and career counselor, and I noticed that on these applications, they would ask, does your school have class rank? If you said yes, it populated certain questions. If it said no, it populated other questions. In talking with the admissions people, I realized that class ranking lost the value that it once had. They were really looking at the robust...
It sounded to me, what you were basically saying is you want all the kids to feel like they're the same. What I want to ask you is this. What is stopping the children? What's making them, what's going to motivate them to be number one in their class? Not the school, in their class, to be the best they can be?
That's easy. Either they're motivated by themselves and what's inside, or they're motivated by their parents or whoever else is their guiding light in life. Giving somebody a trophy, giving, as you mentioned, everybody a trophy, absolutely meaningless. But using the Latin system by rank, all of you in this room, I assume most of you graduated from college. Somewhere on that degree is a seal that says cum laude, other Latin ranks. You're proud of that. Were you less proud of it because it wasn't unique? I think people are proud of things regardless of whether they're the single soul, one recipient, or they're part of a group of people in that, as Stephen described, 5% or 10%.
Let me pass it down to Ms. Williams. We'll come back, but it sounds to me like we should stop playing sports. Go ahead. Were you proud of them?
Yes, you did. I never mentioned that everybody gets a trophy. I'm against that. But I would like to point out for class rankings, if it's so bad, why are they waiting until 2023 to end it? If it's bad, they should have ended it this year and not be held accountable by the taxpayer for something that's going to happen in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. There were two people on the board that voted against changing, and that was Vicky Manning and myself. Our kids compete in anything that they do. I mean, and we can't pretend that they don't. To deny someone who is so academically either gifted or talented or just loves to learn, loves to study, loves to take the hardest classes, I think we as an educational system should applaud that and praise those kids. My five children were not in that category. They were, you know, good students. They were great athletes. It would be like me telling my son Beamer, don't practice baseball so much. The reason why the board wanted to do this is because they thought that kids could not handle the pressure and that they should be taking classes that were more fun classes, you know, for their electives. That, you know, if they take these hard classes, they wouldn't be able to take something else. But these kids are going to take their hard classes. That's what motivates them. We need to bring back valedictorian, my...
Yes, I am definitely for bringing back valedictorian and salutatorian. I feel that the students deserve that as they work very hard from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade. Thank you very much.
So I just want to add, we surveyed our middle school and elementary parents, and 67%, excuse me, 77% were in favor of dropping class rank. Nationally, 65 to 70% of high schools have dropped class rank in the last 20 years. These kids still apply to college with their GPAs, with their percentile bands, as has been explained earlier. Again, the Latin, most systems just dropped it, period. The superintendent proposes introducing the Latin system, which has been in place at the college level for decades, and is recognizing all the students. In the past, we point out, you got an honors designation. Now we are distinguishing honors, cum laude, summa cum laude, magna cum laude. We're trying to distinguish, you know, the nuanced achievements of our students.
I'm in favor of bringing back valedictorian and salutatorian. I feel like this is really a family conversation, not a school board conversation. It is how we raise our children. You teach your children to do their personal best and to have pride in their personal best. I raised three children. Not one of them was valedictorian and salutatorian. They've all been successful. They're doing well. Furthermore, one of the things that is concerning me is Aaron Spence was just quoted in a paper not too long ago talking about lowering of standards. He says our graduation rate doesn't reflect the lowering of standards. It reflects the increase in our abilities. I talked for 30 years. We are lowering our standards. I can promise you that. And we need school board members who are strong enough to speak up and change things. And I am that candidate. I want to change things. I want to raise the bar because if we raise the bar, our kids will hit that mark, and we should expect the very best for every child.
With all due respect to Ms. Rye, she's a wonderful woman. I met her a few weeks ago. But a survey said 73% of parents and students did not want to eliminate the valedictorian and salutatorian. I am all for reinstating that in 2022. That's when it's going to be eliminated. I feel they have, like we talked about, superintendent of the year, teacher of the year, assistant teacher of the year. We have all type of football players of all walks of life that comes to sports. I am definitely in favor of keeping that program intact for the kids who want to strive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
We're not, we're both saying, there were two different questions, just to clarify that. So, and I, I...
I want to make one real quick comment, then we'll move on to the next question. First of all, I keep hearing about the Latin system. I believe in the American system. That's number one. Number two, it used to be we were number one in education in the entire world. We're not even in the top 20 now. So maybe we should get back to some of the basics. That's just my take. Okay, next question. Please hold your applause even for the moderator. Okay, the next one is for... Okay, Stephen Johnston. Given the recent emphasis on mental health, how important do you... How important do you feel unstructured social play is for our students? Do you support practices in place in many Virginia Beach schools such as removing of retro... Retrostricting, I can't even read this question. What is your opinion of building Taj Mahal schools?
That's just like asking Arcade, you should file the city manager. I work at an engineering company. Virginia Beach is spending way too much on schools. Last Monday, I went to Fairfield Elementary School, Fairfield Civic League. That has the same exact floor plan as Plaza Elementary School, the school I went to. In the past, they built one floor plan, and they site-adapted it to every place they were even. We don't need each school with a separate identity, as their superintendent likes to say. We're spending a lot of money on useless lead features that do not save energy. And when you hear the school board talk about this, oh, we save, we save millions in energy. But they're comparing it to a building that was built in 1950s. If they compare it to a building that was built today, they would see that these lead buildings are using more energy than what the standard buildings.
Thank you. Kendra? What is your opinion of... What are your top priorities, excuse me, for the Virginia Beach schools if you're elected?
I am hoping to make sure that all our schools are safe. We have the buzzer system in place, and it is working at certain schools. I want to see it across the board. I also want to make sure that every person that works for Virginia Beach City Public Schools uses their badge and comes in and make sure that you are accountable because if something happens in an emergency, we're not going to be able to see whether or not you were in there if you did not use your badge. Thank you.
Thank you. Seko, I've got a question for you. Given the recent emphasis on mental health, how important do you feel recess and unstructured social play is for our students? Do you support the practices in place in many Virginia Beach schools such as removing or restricting recess time for behavior? Keeping students from participating in PE, silent lunch, et cetera? Please explain, not just a yes or no.
Wow, I just said yes and no. Okay. I taught elementary school. I taught elementary classes, K1 and K2, when I was a teacher. So I know how important it is to really gauge your students when they have some unstructured play. Middle school? Nah. High school? Nah. So, I mean, there's a time when it's appropriate. So should I discipline a child by removing their ability to engage in recess? Okay, you also asked if I should remove their ability to gauge in PE. I'm going to pull PE out because that's a class. They go to class. Students should go to class. Should I restrict a student from engaging in recess if I'm using it as a disciplinary measure? I did. I still would. Oh, I'm Seko Varn.
Varn?
I am in favor of structured PE at the middle school and high school level. I believe that left to their own devices, most teenagers would stand there for 30 minutes on their cell phones. However, at the elementary level, I do believe that they need unstructured play. Children are creative. They need that brain break. And at that age, they make up their own games. They learn to socialize. They learn how to problem solve. And they really need that creative time outside of the classroom during the day.
Thank you. Mr. Malati? What is your position on full-day kindergarten?
Full-day kindergarten is important. I believe it's one of the best investments we've ever made. Unlike some people, I don't believe that it's, that it's taken here at the taxpayer's expense. I believe that, when you talked earlier about how we're the 20th-ranked school in the world.
No, I didn't say that. I said, "We're not even 20th."
Not even 20th. It starts at the very, very foundation and the very, very beginning of education, which kindergarten is. I really believe that it's important. I think that the school board's on the right track. I think it's money well spent.
Thank you. Ms. Wales? What is your position on full-day kindergarten?
I'm definitely in favor of it. I raised three children in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And seeing these young children attending kindergarten, I think they're ready for a full-day program. They get an opportunity to interact with other children. They're learning how to read. They're learning a lot, more things at an earlier age than probably we learned when we were growing up. It's a healthy environment for them to be in, so I'm definitely in favor of all they hear.
Thank you. Mr. Day? What is your position on the new grading system? And then I have a question for each one of them. Very important question.
Again, I'm 100% against it. I feel that, again, I talk about site-based, that each school does what they want to do. You might have this school says, "Okay, we're not going to give out zeros." This school says, "We'll give only minimum 50." I think that, and another thing about the zeros, they don't, they wait to the end of the semester before they actually award that child a zero. So they give them plenty of time to turn in their homework. I know we have some teachers in there, former teachers, that will attest to the fact that, at times, they're told not to give these teachers, I mean, not give these students zeros. And I really believe it has to be across the board, the same grading practices.
Mr. Day, don't get comfortable. I'm going to start with you. Do you feel it was appropriate to start at the beginning of the school day playing the National Anthem over the intercom, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Being a United States Navy veteran and retired police officer, absolutely do believe the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe that we should continue that in our schools. I'm 100% in favor of that.
Absolutely. We live in a military community. I have military students in my classroom. We need to come and be a united front. This is the United States of America, and we all need to work together. We need to instill in our children a love for our country and to respect our military. And the fact that these men and women right here in Virginia Beach are sacrificing their lives for our safety. They're sacrificing their lives so that we can live freely. So yes, we need to continue with that. Thank you. I'm Mary Watson Wales.
I agree completely. And I'm sure my husband was, well, at a 40-year career as a Navy civilian attorney and a Army Jack lawyer. But I don't think we even have to be a military family to agree with that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I definitely agree with what he had said. I have spent 30 years as well with my husband in the military. And I'll tell you, it's just as rough on the military person that's in than it is on the spouse that's staying home and taking care of the children and raising them.
Yes, I definitely think that is very appropriate and also very much needed, especially in today's society. I love this country. We need to all love it. We live here, and that is just a great way to start the day. I will go further to say that I think that all the teachers and all the students need to stand for that as well.
Is it appropriate to play the Pledge of Allegiance, I mean, the National Anthem, and then recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Is that the question? The answer is absolutely. Absolutely. Without a doubt. You know, that's how we make great citizens. That's how we make the students who want to take this country and continue making it great. That's how we make it happen. So absolutely.
I think every day, I could start the day if you were old from the Old Italian neighborhood. My father went to mass every morning. It was to remind himself of who he was and where he came from. And I think that the Pledge of Allegiance, I think that when you say those words, you look at the flag, you listen to the Star-Spangled Banner, it reminds you of who you are, where you come from. Thank you.
I do think it is appropriate. However, a little bit here to me says the government should not force children for indoctrination purposes. If children would respectfully sit, be quiet, allow other people to say their pledge, that's fine. I work at a company. We have a company-wide meeting twice a month. Beginning of our meeting, we start with a prayer, and we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. You have to respect the flag. You have to respect what it stands for. And what it stands for is the individual's rights and liberties. And if children don't want to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, that's between them and the flag and their parents. It's not for the government to say, "You must stand. You must pledge allegiance to the government. You're not to Nazis." Thank you.
Just have a quick question myself. I'm just curious, kind of, God. When does a child become an adult? And I thought we were responsible for the children's actions up until they were 18. I'm just curious. I could be wrong.
I believe it is absolutely appropriate in American schools to start the day with the National Anthem and the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't believe that you asked if children should be forced to do it, but I do believe that if we, as parents and educators, show pride in doing it and make it a regular thing, they would become accustomed to that, and they wouldn't be forced.
Okay. This next question, thank you very much, is for Ms. Weems. Ms. Weems, is there a school board policy that runs concurrent with state law that prohibits school board members from voting for any expenditures that may benefit a member's family business? Now, this question was supposed to be asked to Kim Melvin, who's not here, for families receiving contracts for school construction. So what's the?
Can I ask, can I answer the Lisa's question? Now, yes, the Conflict of Interest Act, and it's a state law, and then also we have policy. And I'm sure that y'all read about my business a couple of years ago because a colleague of mine on the board questioned our business practices. So if you have a business or if you do anything that is in perception of a conflict, and what a conflict would be is you cannot gain any financial or any, I'm trying to say. You cannot have any gains for doing business with the schools. In fact, you cannot do business with the schools. So it is a conflict. And if you do, you have to go to the, if you think that you're in a family business or have a situation, you go to Comstock Lee, and you get a legal opinion. And that's what I did. I got two of them. But yeah, there should not be doing, nobody's business should be doing any business with the schools. That's against the law.
Thank you very much. Carolyn, this next question is for you. What is your position on teachers who have a concealed carry permit being allowed to carry in the school?
At this point, my understanding is that would be a general assembly matter. So I know there's different opinions on the subject. You know, Virginia is not very yet as a state with regard to arming teachers. But it's an ongoing conversation. But again, from what I, from what I see, just every, at the last forum we were at, there was universal agreement that we don't want to harm our teachers. So that's what I can say with certainty. No, no. And I have, I've had parents of teachers come to me saying, you know, "Tell me you're not going to force my teacher, child to..." I mean, so again, I think right now it's very limited, the number of states who have gone that route. I think it's just an ongoing national conversation.
Kendra?
I do not believe in arming any of our teachers. We need to hire police officers and retired military personnel that had the training in order to place them in our schools full-time. We do not have any SROs, as they're called, School Resource Officers. We have them in middle school and high schools right now. They're associated with the elementary schools, which means they have to leave the middle and high schools to go check on their elementary schools. I would like to see those police officers or retired military trained and have them in the elementary schools as well, full-time during the day and not leave. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, can you answer a question as well?
Sure. I don't think we should be arming teachers. That's the last thing we should do. And the shooting in Florida, there were police officers on the site. A shooter came in, started shooting people. Teachers come into the hallway, they pull out their guns, and they start shooting back. How do the police know who the good guys are and who the bad guys are? In the city of Virginia Beach, we are just too big. If we were a rural farming area where it takes a while for the police there and everybody's familiar with guns, I would say it would be appropriate there, but not here in Virginia Beach. No.
Okay, we're going to switch gears from there. This is a question all of you will probably be concerned with. And I'm going to each, each one of you, just pass the microphone down, please. What is the responsibility of school board members?
The responsibility of school board members is to represent the children and the citizens and support teachers so that they can teach.
School board policy is a three-piece. Policy or responsibility is a three-piece. Policy, planning, and problems. They set the policy for the schools for the administration, teachers to follow. They do planning, the budget processes and other, other planning things. And they deal with problems that come up that the administration is not capable of.
As a former school board member, I was instructed when I arrived that I had two responsibilities. One was some oversight of the budget. We do have our hands on the budget. And the budget doesn't get passed without the approval of the school board. And the second is we are the policymakers. We make policy. Or is it suggested very often by the administration? Certainly. But ultimately, we are policymakers.
At the last forum, my compadre, two Cs down, used to three Ps. And I just fell in love with it. So I want to thank you for that. So I agree, planning, policy, problem solving. But I also add support. So I'm PPPS. Doesn't sound as good as the three Ps, but I'm PPPS. So planning, policy, problem solving, and support. And I think the support piece is ultimately, not superior, but important. Because we need to make sure that our students, our staff, and our community is supported. So PPPS, I'm Seko Varn.
Yes, we are policymakers. So that is our main job. And we also need to make sure that our policies are actually being followed accurately. That is very important. And we need to be able to fiscally be responsible for $800 million. We have a huge budget. So my job is to help make policy, to try to be fiscally responsible with your money, and then also to turn out a great product. And that goes back to making sure that we are educating our children that once they graduate and get that diploma, they can go into the military, the workforce, and college and actually be prepared. So that includes discipline, work ethic, way beyond test scores. And I think my job, too, is to listen to you and ask questions. I do not want to sit up there and just push a green button. I think our board now, too much of that is happening. So we're supposed to ask questions and question, question, question.
Yes, I understand that as an elective official, I will work for the citizens of Virginia Beach and make sure that the policies that are in place and those that need to be looked at, that we can go ahead and take care of those as well, along with everyone else on the school board. Thank you. Kendra Edwards?
So first and foremost, obviously, we do need to listen to you. And one of the most exciting things of it being a candidate has been listening to all of you all and gathering information. So that when I get elected, I know what your concerns are. I know the types of things that we have to tackle. So I am listening to you. We are the policy setters. The superintendent sets regulations. We do have a large budget that we're responsible for. I think we need to take a closer look at our budget. We are overspending, particularly with new schools. I'm not in favor of Taj Mahal schools. I taught at First Colonial. As you all know, it's an older school. What makes good schools is great teachers. And we don't need the overspending there. We need to continue to support our faculty and to support our children. And again, be mindful of the budget and be stewards of your taxpayer dollars. And I'm Mary Watson Wales again.
Like all my colleagues did, we are to implement policy. The superintendent is supposed to enforce that policy. And that's what we're lacking. We, as school board members, are representing every single voter, including the ones who didn't vote for us. Our job is to listen to the parents and listen to their concerns. That's not happening. They are on the dais, they're listening to it, and they've already got their minds made up. We implement policy. Now we need someone to enforce that policy, and it's not being done. Thank you.
Okay, this next question is for Seko, Ms. Gavarna. Do you support or oppose new grading policies that give the teachers the option to award students a grade of 50 when an assignment was not turned in? Why or why not?
If students didn't turn in the assignment, they don't get a grade. If students didn't turn in the assignment, they don't get a grade. Why? They didn't turn in the assignment. Now, so I, I, I'm not a big supporter of that particular policy. I see the merit of allowing students a little levity so they can bounce back. I do realize that zero and a fifty are both failing grades. You get a zero or a fifty, you're taking the class over. So I, I see the merit in allowing some bounce back. And being totally honest, if two teachers didn't allow me to turn in some late work, I wouldn't be here. So, it's not something I think should happen. But I think we're, our professionals are smart enough. When that student just needs that opportunity, that bit of grace. You know, I, I serve somebody who allows for second chances. So.
I will take that as you do. You do support it. I don't know what else to say. You know what I'm saying? That one's a tough one.
I do not support giving a fifty for work not turned in. If the work's not turned in, it merits a zero. I do believe that teachers should have the leeway to apply grace and accept late work perhaps at a grade discount, or when it is merited, allow makeup work. But zero work earns a zero grade.
Okay. Next question. This one is for Mr. Malati. What is your position on school discipline?
Having been the recipient of almost 200 detentions in my junior year of high school, this is true. Runway was only 180 days. Morning and afternoon detention many times I spent. I think discipline is absolutely, absolutely mandated. You've got to make it. You cannot allow kids to run amok. It just, you just can't do it. You've gotta demand respect. You've gotta demand discipline. And, and the endemic problem isn't so much in the schools as it is prevented at home. The parents need to be on board. You're not gonna fix any of these social issues unless the parents are on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Very quickly here, Ms. Wales, do you believe?
We definitely need to implement school discipline. When I first started teaching, if I called home, I would get, "Oh, Ms. Wales, thank you so much. I really appreciate the phone call. You won't have any trouble with my child." And pretty much that's what happened. By the end of my time teaching, I got, "Well, Ms. Wales, I understand you. You were disrespectful to my child." Apple doesn't fall far from the tree. So when I would attend parent conferences to talk about school discipline, I got cussed at. I was treated with disrespect. I had to walk out of a conference. So we need to instill discipline in our children. And it does begin at home. We need the support from our parents. But we need to send out the message to our parents that we're a team. Teachers are not here to get your, your child. We are a team. We need to make it a team effort. And if we work together as a team, I think we'll see successful strides in discipline in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Day. Same question?
That's one of my platforms of school discipline, almost school safety. We absolutely have a major problem that comes to school discipline. That is one of the reasons why I'm running. I need more than a minute to really explain all my life experiences for the past 10 years. But last year, at the Taker Middle School, there was a student being disruptive. I asked that student, "I need your name, young lady." "Why?" "Because you were disrupting entire class." I don't have a gift to you. I will not repeat what she said. It was that bad. I referred her to, to the office. And, and to get back real quickly what they said, we've talked to her. That child received zero consequences. And that is our problem with the schools now. We have, it is running the muck, Mr. Malati. It is running the muck in our school that comes to school discipline. We have a major problem with that.
Mr. Malati, you wanna respond? You just mentioned your name. Okay. Next question. And this is for Ms. Williams. Are teachers leaving deep schools? And if so, why?
No, teachers are not leaving deep schools. I think that we, either, I think two years ago, I think they said maybe fourteen had left. I mean, so, and so many more are coming in. I mean, of course, they leave because of retirement, or they might, you know, change careers. But people like working in Virginia Beach. We have very good pay, according to, you know, our regional cohorts. And then we just have great resources in Virginia Beach. We really do. So that counts a lot for teachers. So teachers are very satisfied. We recruit teachers from different school divisions because people do want to work in Virginia Beach.
Mr. Seko, do you have an opinion on dangers of opioid addiction being taught as early as the first grade?
I started teaching my children the dangers of drugs as soon as I could talk with them and they could respond to it. Now, the way you would do it makes all the difference. So that simple, open question doesn't really reflect the layers that a professional teacher would provide. That professional teacher would say, "For the elementary school student, there are things you stay away from. But with the middle school student, these are the things you stay away from and the reasons why. With those high school students, we're gonna go into the, into the chemistry of how it destroys your brain." So, I don't like the question. I don't like the question. I don't think it's robust enough for me to give a really strong answer. So I'll give a simple answer, and it's, we should always do our best to protect our students. Mitch, your name?
Carolyn Williams.
Remember, don't shoot the messenger.
That's my name, that's my name. Actually, opioid education is so important. Seventy-two thousand people died last year. That's 200 people today. I went to our legislators and helped craft a bill that got passed for opioid education to be in all of our schools statewide. And the governor signed it. It passed a hundred zeros. So five partisan support for that. We do start it in first grade. In the first grade, the first lesson is, "This is a medicine bottle." You know, painkillers, medicine from the doctor. If you find this, give it to your parent, your grandparent, give it to an adult. Don't dare open it. So, and then it progresses through, by the time they're in eighth and ninth grade, they're actually doing studies about what opioids, the chemicals, what they do to your brain. They're doing public service announcement, PowerPoints. It's a great curriculum. And I'm very pleased that Virginia Beach started it and wrote the curriculum. And now all schools in Virginia are going to implement it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know all of you are gonna have fun with this question. So we'll start right here. Do you think the superintendent is adequately paid and should get an $11,000 bonus? Just go right on then.
He is well over adequately paid.
I do believe the superintendent is overpaid. If you look at the superintendent's statements of the, from last year's budget, 48% of the Virginia Beach operating budget for public schools goes towards leadership. Twenty, I think it's 32%, actually goes toward teaching and learning. The Virginia Beach public school system is getting too top-heavy. Like any organization that's been existed for a very long time, we need to start triggering people at the top.
I believe the superintendent has paid his contractual wage that he negotiated for and is entitled to, of which the bonus that he received, albeit rich, is something else that was part of his contract. He did the job. He deserves what he gets.
I think he makes a good, uh, good living. All right, so the second part of the question is, should he deserve the $11,000? As was just stated, if it was part of the, I, I think you have to honor contracts. You know, if, if, if you say, "I wanna be a student," and the teacher says, "The homework," you do the homework. If part of the contract is you have to show up for school, he'll show up for school. So if that's part of the contract, it's part of the contract. But I think he's well paid.
By the way, his salary is $243,911. Figured you might want that information.
As I stated earlier, he's well paid.
Yes, he's adequately paid. And this bonus is a contractual agreement, and it depends on his evaluations. And evaluations are done by all school board members. So not just me, but all school board members. And so this contract reflects that.
I believe that he is well overpaid. I work at facility services. And right now, we have people that are struggling down there to even have a family. And we're the ones that go out and maintain all of our schools. So I do believe that he is well overpaid. Thank you.
He's definitely well paid. I wish I had been so well paid during my 30 years as an English teacher. I think that there's a big discrepancy between what our teachers are making and what our administrators are making. We could curtail some of that top-heavy expenditure and put more money into the teachers' pockets. I think that when I taught for 30 years and I talked dead, you know, $63,000, $65,000, that's really tragic to me when I look at what I talked dead at and what he is currently making. Now I'm a retired teacher. I receive a pension. I cannot live off of my pension. I have to do other jobs in order to supplement my income. And I see that as a real problem, particularly with somebody who spent 30 years in this whole system. So it is a contract. I get that. But I think his contract ought to be renegotiated and maybe look at how we can better spend our money and our budget.
Yes, he is definitely overpaid. And that's why we need six to make a change, this November 6th. He has 44 staff members underneath him that make six figures. And if it doesn't start with a six, it started with a nine. We have way too many staff. I think he's overstaffed. And that doesn't include the principals and sister principals. I have no problem with their pay. But I just think we have way too many staff members underneath him. Forty-four is all, is quite a lot. So I do agree he's overpaid.
Okay, the next question is for Kendra. Kendra, should schools be open for meals during the summer months? If so, only 27 schools are doing so. What about the rest of them?
Yes, if, if you can adequately put, place the people that will be able to maintain those cafeterias and take care of all the issues. Our custodians are very, very overworked, even during the school year. In the summertime, they have to go through, they have to take wax off, put wax on. I don't know whether or not, right now, I have heard that we had a lot of custodians that they have taken away positions in our schools. And right now, it's really being hard on those custodians.
Okay, thank you. Steven?
Same question, same question. Yes, I think schools should be open during the summer. Currently, they're open through a depart, through a Department of Agriculture grant that supplements the farms, which is used to supplement poor, low-income families. A lot of these children would not be eating in the summer if the schools weren't open. And it's just something that we as a society have agreed to do. We have reduced lunches. And should it happen in all schools? No, it shouldn't. You know, John B. Dow is one of the richest school areas in the city. They shouldn't be open in the summer for lunch. But then again, Betty F. Williams should be. Because if we don't help feed the children there through the agriculture department, where those children aren't going to be able to eat.
Laura, same question, please.
Yes, I do believe that we should feed hungry children in the summer. It does make more sense as far as efficiency to have it, not every single school. You can have hubs. And Betty F. Williams was brought up. You have a tri campus there. You don't need to open all three buildings when they're on the walking distance. There are four elementary schools all about the same distance from my school. If you put them where the need is the greatest, it's fine to have hub schools to do that.
Ms. Williams, you should note this question very quickly. How many schools are there in Virginia Beach?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, okay. All right, just curious. Next question. This one will go to Ms. Wales. How would you ensure budget accountability so taxes aren't raised needlessly when there's an ending budget, the last ending budget, they said had a $20 million surplus?
Wow. So how do we overlook the budget? I think, first of all, we need to start with the areas where we are overspending. And I think one of the biggest areas of overspending is probably with new construction. When you're talking about millions of dollars in new construction, sometimes over $100 million in new construction, we need to take a look at that and see how we can better earmark that money. Other ways that we can curtail or pull back our spending is probably with our contracting, for example, teacher training. A lot of times, we bring in insiders to train our teachers. They're paid anywhere from $50,000 upward. We have teachers in the school system who can adequately train other teachers. They're already on the payroll, so we don't have to spend any additional money. Those are just a couple of examples how I think we can look at the budget, examine it, and perhaps look at better spending opportunities.
Thank you very much. Certainly, Kendra Day.
I think the first thing we need is have an open book check. We need to have, so it's transparency all through the city of Virginia Beach. I know my friend Eric Ray likes the need-based budget, but right now, as far as the school funding model, I think it's better for plain right now. But I really believe we need to have an open book check.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start at this. And here's one right here for Ms. Hughes. Should portable classrooms be used for temporary or emergency use?
I believe that portables are fine for short-term emergency use. I do not believe that we should have an entire school in portable buildings for years at a time. We have an entire elementary school that will be in portables for two years. And the ones that go to Princess Anne High School will probably be in their gift for a couple of years while their high school is being rebuilt. So 12 years of education, some children will be in portables for four full years. That is not okay when we have buildings we could use as swing spaces.
Mr. Johnson, what's that you?
For temporary and emergency purposes, yes. Now, I remember growing up here in Virginia Beach. They had a fire at Princess Anne High School. They closed the high school down. They moved the entire high school to the old outlet mall up here on Virginia Boulevard. They conducted classes there for a year. There was too much open office space, too many empty storefronts out there. We could have done that instead of building the portable classroom village. On the earlier question about the budget, just like to remind everybody that last, two years ago, when the, when the school board approved all-day kindergarten, they asked for $12 million for a program that was only gonna cost $2 million the first year. It's not the school board that's gonna be able to control this. It's gonna be you, the voters, to take these people out who are just overtaxing you and taking your money and spending it any way they want to. We gotta close that check.
Mr. Malati, do you support or oppose the VBCPS school line adoption of later start time for high school students and acceleration of the addition of lights on all high school athletic fields to expedite this change?
Complex question with a complex answer. With bus routes, the people's schedules, everything works now, except for the high school kid. It really doesn't work for the high school kid. These kids have been proven need to sleep later. I, I can't tell you why. I sure didn't. But apparently, they do. And at some point, I think they're going to change it. I think that, I, I don't know how, because there's so many moving pieces to get, to get, especially with the transportation in tow. The lights are eight, eight to nine million dollars, by the way, to add those athletic lights, which because, of course, you change their schedule, we move everything later in the day. And what was dusk is now dark. And so you have to have the lights. Complex question.
Thank you very much. Mr. Varner, you wanna weigh in on that, please?
Yeah, I do think it's a complex question. What's better for the students or what's better for our budget? So, you know, my platform is safest, hard, and stronger. And the stronger piece is stronger community connections. I think with better resources from the community, you know, big business and other resources that are out there, we can find ways to fund the lights. And if so, then we can move forward. But, yeah, it's just a challenge to be respectful of budget, to respect the, the needs of the students, particularly when the students aren't damaged by the current schedule. Yeah, I think we need to work on it until we can get the effort.
Thank you very much. Ms. Edwards, I'm gonna go back to a prior question. How would you ensure budget accountability so taxes are not raised needlessly when the budget ended up with a $20 million surplus?
I do believe that the $20 million surcharge was taken and was used. I know the school plan used their budget over, or left over money. And I believe some of the other departments also used the leftover money, which could have went to some of our teachers, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, to make sure that they were adequate paid. They are the ones that we need. They bring the students to school, they clean our schools. We really need to look at those and your budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Day, do you support granting the school board direct taxing abilities instead of depending on city council to allocate funds to the school board? Why or why not?
I feel it should maintain what's going right now. I think city council should be the ones that oversee our budget. And when they allot the budget to the school board, again, I'm for the open checkbook transparency. But I believe city council should be the ones who allot that budget to us.
Thank you very much. You wanna weigh in then, Ms. Wales?
Well, currently, the school board puts together their budget, and then they give the budget to the city council. So I like this sort of check and balance between the school board and the city council. If the school board needs additional money, then I think they should be able to go to the school board and provide transparency and explain why they need the additional funds. But I think currently, the way we're doing it between the checks and balances with school board and city council is effective.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have one question left. And I wanna ask this question. And I'd like you to do it very, very short and quickly, if you could be kind enough, please. Why do you really wanna be on the school board?
The reason I wanna be on the school board is I wanna make a change. I've seen the past 10 years, and I hate using this phrase, boots on the ground, but I've been in the classroom, I've been in the cafeteria, I've walked the halls of many schools in Virginia Beach, and I know we need to make major improvements. And I believe with my experience as a police officer, a resource officer, a dare officer, substitute teacher for the past 10 years, I know what needs to be done to make those changes and improve our schools.
Thank you. Ms. Wales? Ms. Wales, quickly, please.
Thank you. I taught for 30 years, so I saw a lot of changes in that 30 years. I am passionate about educating our children. I want to see a change. I have worked for the school system for over 24 years, and I have seen a very big decline in not only grading, discipline, and I really want to work hard to help the school employees and the school board to make sure that our students are accountable and we have great students that graduate 12th grade. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wales?
I want to continue to be on the school board, because my five children graduated from our schools, and my granddaughter is attending, and I have seen a change. I want to make sure that there's someone, at least, you know, someone sitting in my seat, who we're going to challenge, ask questions, represent you, raise expectations, discipline, not ask for tax increases, and I just want to make sure I can do that in my seat, and I hope that others, in the next four years, will be able to do it too.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin, quickly.
Not ask for tax, or whatever, tax money. I've worked in the schools, now I want to work on the schools. I want to increase the value for our students. I want our students to walk off the stage more valuable than the students walking off the graduation stages in DC, Maryland, San Francisco, New York City. I want our students to win. I love America, I love all the states, I love all our students, but I want our students to be top choice.
Thank you very much. Mr. Malani?
I don't want change. I want transition. You'll say they're the same word, but they're not. I want to see something that moves and continues to move and grow at the same exponential rate that our education way of doing things. No one's educated the way I was today. It's a completely difficult, and if we don't continue to progress, we can't stay the same because we'll be decaying. Thank you.
Why do I want to be on the school board? I want to be on the school board because I graduated here in Virginia Beach. I now work at an engineering company. My two sons graduated. One's going to medical school, the other works as a medical transport company. Virginia Beach Public Schools has done us right. Unfortunately, I don't think the children today have the same opportunities that my children and I have. Six years ago, the city of Virginia Beach school system was ranked fourth best in the nation by Waldo. Today, we aren't even ranked third best in Hampton Roads. I went to VPAP, they published the list showing the correct college acceptance rates of all the systems in Virginia. Chesapeake was number one. Portsmouth was number, or, excuse me, Virginia Beach was number three. The city of Portsmouth was number two. Portsmouth has the higher acceptance rate in the colleges than Virginia Beach. I think that's wrong, and we need to correct that.
I want to be on the school board because I have two daughters who are 13 years apart, and so for 24 years, I've had children in the schools, and I've seen a steady decline. I also want to be on the school board because I don't want a majority that asks for $14 million for all-day kindergarten, and then only uses a seventh of it to partially implement it and then ask for more. I also have a special education child, and I want to be on the school board to make sure that special education children do not fall through the cracks. Also, I want to make sure that teachers have the freedom to teach in a creative manner so that our children are ready for what comes out through high school, and they're taught how to think. But the personal agendas need to stay out of the classroom. Our children need to be taught how to think, not what to say.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a round of applause. That concludes the question period of the form this evening. And now, we're going to go to the one-minute closing. We'll start off with Paul Day.
School safety is an internal threat, and student discipline is an internal threat. My experience in law enforcement substituting Virginia City Public Schools provides unique insight into potential problems and solutions. I believe it's time to put two retired officers in every elementary school. We should also ensure uninterrupted security at middle and high schools. Currently, resource officers are often diverted from their designated school for training, leave, court appearances, et cetera. Safety procedures must be consistent from school to school. My knowledge of the school culture, as well as the teachers and students themselves, is from firsthand one-on-one experiences. I have seen what works and what doesn't. Teachers, parents, and students have voiced their frustrations, and with a unified school board, we can resolve these concerns. Please vote with me on November 6th, Paul Day for school board. Thank you.
I'm Mary Watson Wales, and I am your candidate for the Lynn Haven District. Because I have 30 years of teaching experience on the high school level, and I retired not that long ago, I feel like it's really fresh, and I know what the teachers are dealing with, I know the issues in the classroom, and I feel like I have the experience to do a great job for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I'm not in favor of giving 50s. If students don't earn a grade, they don't get a grade. However, we have to provide steps to ensure that our students are successful. We have to call parents, we have to get them involved, maybe drop the lowest grade. You can't just go straight to giving a child a zero, but you have to make sure you have met certain steps before you come to that. But if at the end of the day, a child hasn't turned something in, he receives a zero. I want to bring back valedictorian and salutatorian, and I want to raise that bar for our students. A lot of universities and colleges give scholarships based on a student being valedictorian or salutatorian.
Hi, I'm Kendra Edwards, and I would like to say that I really want to improve the security in all of our schools across the board. That's where I work in, down at Facility Services. I also would, will work for all the citizens of Virginia Beach, and will seek the input of citizens before making a decision, not after. And I also want to see what is best for all the children and all the communities here in Virginia Beach. Thank you very much.
Again, I'm Carolyn Wings, and I thank you for your support in the past. I will continue advocating for special education students so that they receive legally correct and educationally sound educations so they can thrive and be successful once they graduate. I also want to work, again, as I have the last four terms on career and technical education. Not everybody goes to college. Two of my kids did not. I would love to have a 12th high school that's completely full-day vote tech, so the kids aren't having to go to Mesa and drive and miss half the day, and so that it will be like a have-up-north of complete school for career and technical education. Fiscal responsibility, I will continue to look at being a fiscal hand and ask those tough questions, and of course, student accountability. We have got to, we can't just rest on our accolades. We are a good school division, but these kids have got to know work ethic, they've got to know discipline, they've got to know to follow the rules, and they've got to know that there's a school culture, and there's a work culture, and we need to prepare them. Thank you.
Okay, so I think there are some very important questions. What are you going to do? How are you going to do it? How are you going to pay for it? So I'm Seiko Martin, and I want safer, smarter, stronger. Safer schools emotionally and physically. I want smarter outcomes. I want more of our students to walk off that stage with credentials that will make them valuable, whether they go into the military, if they go into the workforce, or if they go to college. And I want stronger connections with the businesses and the communities and all the resources in our school. So, that's what I want. How do you do it? Safer schools? You do that by staffing and professional development, armed staffing and professional development. How am I going to pay for it? We pay for it by being better stewards of the resources that we already have. We pay for it by being better stewards of what we already have, and we can fund exactly what we need. We can make sure our students are smarter.
My agenda, my name is Bobby Malani, I forgot to tell you who I was. My agenda is as follows. Recruitment and retention of good teachers. And you're not just competing regionally, but you're competing with the boardroom. It's not just the classroom. It's the classroom versus the boardroom, how are we going to be competitive? Funding for capital improvement projects. We're on a 140-year cycle now to replace and refurbish all the schools. That isn't going to work. Not going to work. Safety. Like I mentioned earlier, there's a Blue Ribbon Panel that the city and the school system participated in. Fantastic, and they're already implementing these things. People are liking this stuff. People are working towards solutions. My name is Bobby Malani. If you like what you heard, I appreciate your vote on November 6th. Thank you, sir.
I should run out front like I already did. My name is Steven Johnston, and I'd love to be your servant on the Virginia Beach School Board. Why am I running? I'm running so that every child in Virginia Beach has the same opportunity for quality education as me and my children have had. Whether you're college-bound or trade school-bound or bound to go into the military, we have an excellent ROTC program, constantly getting kids in the military. Where Virginia Beach falls short is on our trades program. We do need to start looking at trades more often. Companies are screaming for wealthers, they're screaming for people to operate CAD/CAM machines, and Virginia Beach isn't providing those services. That's why Facebook went to Norfolk, went up to Richmond, they didn't stay here in Virginia Beach. The Virginia Beach School Board does need to be more physically conservative with our money on the budget, as well as in the CIP. For every two schools Virginia Beach is building, Norfolk is building three. There's something wrong with that equation. I'm Steven Johnston, and I'd like to take that. Thank you.
My name is Laura Hughes, and I'm your candidate at large. Between my time as a parent, my volunteerism, and my career, everything I do is child-focused. I want to make sure that every child is well-educated and prepared for what comes out through high school, whatever they choose to do. I want to make sure that they are excited about education, and they grow up inquisitive, wanting to learn, push them ahead of the game no matter what they want to do. They need to be held to high standards, both academically and behaviorally, and we need to let them know that it's okay to strive to be the best. I want to bring back valedictorian. I also believe that we need to be much more fiscally conservative, and one of the best ways we can do that is by holding our school board accountable by implementing an online checkbook. It's much harder to spend without accountability when everyone can look over your shoulder and see everything that comes in and everything that goes out. I'd love your support on November 6th. Thank you.
These are your school board candidates, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much. You know, there's a lot of early people, a lot of young people. Thank you, Virginia, for having me. This city of Virginia Beach is better for you have been here. Thank you so much. One more time, ladies and gentlemen. And also, a big round of applause for yourself. Thank you very much. Diana?
Shall we have a big round of applause for our moderator? He's wonderful. Thank you very much. I want everybody to remember, now that you've got it, to put in your stronghold. It's inside your pamphlet, fill it out, do it on the way out. If you want more information about the candidates, there's a table out there with your information, and you can, like, ask them questions, but we have to be out of the library by 9 o'clock. Thank you so much for coming, and that is the end.